Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, December 4, 2023. Call this historic meeting to order at 6:30 PM. With that, I'd like to recognize that all the council members are present with the exception of Councilor Archer, who has been excused this evening. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of this nation, indivisible, with the reading of Justice Harrow.
Thank you for that. At this time, I would like to bring up Jeremy Ray, School Board Member LaFortune, Councilor Purdy, and myself. We're going to come right up here to the podium and say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. I think I'm going to stand this way. I'm going to put my backs to you guys. I want to speak to the audience here tonight because on behalf of the school committee, we have two very special people to recognize for their commitment to the school committee. So I would like to first start with Bill. And on behalf of the school committee, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for all the meetings that you made, the communication, the effort that you put in towards making the schools a better place. It's a tough job and how any mayor can balance the number of meetings here and then school committees and all of the communication. The school committee wants to thank you for everything that you've done for us and for the students on behalf of the Saco schools. So hopefully that will work. And then secondly, on behalf of the school committee, over this time, got to know Kevin LaFortune very well. First met Kevin several years ago, a lot of those through his dad on the first meeting, serving on the People's Choice Board. But over the time during COVID and a lot of the Zoom meetings and early on in our sharing of superintendency, got to spend a lot of time talking with Kevin and just realizing and getting to know the wonderful, honest human being who you are. And I know that you had a couple of tours of duty on the school committee, one RSU board, and then back to the Saco board, but it just couldn't ask for a better board chair to work with. And I appreciate everything you have done for student staff, this community, over that tenure. So Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And also, you know, we look towards the city council. We have one of our counselors that's been with us now for the past four years, who didn't seek reelection and is outgoing. And Jim is a man of many words. You just can't hear them sometimes. But with that, Jim, the city council would like to thank you for your service to our community with this small token of our appreciation. That brings us to item five on the agenda, and that is committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondents this evening? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Last Saturday evening, completing my final duty as its city council liaison, I had the pleasure of attending an appreciation dinner for the many folks serving as volunteers for Age Friendly Saco. Having been part of the core group of volunteers who formed the original Board of Directors prior to my council role, it was heartwarming to see how many or how much progress Age Friendly Saco has achieved since its inception. Age Friendly Saco's programs, designed to support the needs of the Saco community, are extensive, supported by approximately 100 volunteer citizens. I would like to extend a public thank you to all the volunteers who support the efforts of Age Friendly Saco. Your commitment to community service does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Any further committee correspondents at this time? No committee correspondents. Moving on to item six of the agenda, and that is public comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. A full house and nobody wants to come up, huh? Wow, all right. With that, moving on to item seven, and that is action items. A is remarks by myself. So bear with me, I'm a little bit long-winded, and I'll try to make it through this the best I can. As the song goes, "Looks like we've made it." As we all have just witnessed, I'm no Barry Manilow. With that said, I have had the immense privilege and honor to serve our great city for the past eight years. My journey began with a city council campaign in 2015 focused on fiscal responsibility and infrastructure. Since that initial campaign, I was reelected in 2017 and elected mayor in 2019. Over the eight years, I have worked with colleagues and councils to move our city forward. During my campaign for mayor, I talked about reversing the bedroom community path this city has roamed down for the past decades. I campaigned on the restoration of certain areas to help grow the community through increased tourism, like Camp Ellis. While accepting and bypassing the growing pains, here's where we are today. The state of the city is strong. The city has a robust financial position due to the last eight years of fiscal responsibility, solid growth, and public desire. The council, due to their fiscal responsibility, increased the reserve amount of the undesignated fund balance, or what many call the rainy day fund. This increase has allowed our city to enjoy better bonding rates on money borrowed. By expanding our tax increment financing districts, or TIFs as they're commonly referred to, has allowed us to shelter money and pay for a portion of the bonds related to the wastewater treatment plan. Improving infrastructure is so important and part of the campaign for smart growth moving forward. Remember, the challenges facing our community during my tenure did not just appear overnight and would take many years, if not multiple terms, to fix. However, a strong foundation is essential to that growth. Improving our wastewater will help with the ongoing residential and commercial growth as well as keep our river usable for years to come. The infrastructure improvements don't stop there. As a counselor, I was one of seven who agreed in 2018 to partner with MDOT for a plan on exit 36 traffic. The city also held forums and came up with some traffic mitigation efforts on its own. The exit 36 expansion is currently underway today, which will mitigate but not totally eliminate traffic issues at North Street and Industrial Park. During my mayoral term, we added two public positions on the Traffic Safety Committee. Filling those appointments has been a difficult task due to low participation, but the importance of these added opportunities are paramount toward moving forward with our future traffic challenges. One of the next infrastructure improvements needed for safety and growth is the Northern Route 1 fire station. Our community needs to continually look at upgrading and expanding infrastructure when possible. One of the major attractions of our great city is our school systems, from pre-K to Thornton Academy. During the campaigns, I would go door to door, talking with families who moved here from away. Despite being from away, I would inquire as to what brought them to Saco. Their number one answer was the school system, although entering at various grades in the school system. Running in 2019, I campaigned on the importance of getting a new school through the school construction program of the state. Notwithstanding the pandemic and changeover in school leadership, our city is on the precipice of progress with being able to create two new schools for approximately $30 million. Two new schools for $30 million. That's a good deal if you saw some of the price tags of our neighboring communities. Although it's no secret that I am not a proponent for the location of the proposed schools, we must finally move forward to build these schools. The future generation deserves the best and safest schools we can provide. However, as a community moves forward, we will be challenged over future school construction projects for our other schools. It may make sense to discuss broadening our over 200-year partnership with Thornton Academy. As the labor shortage continues and the ability to hire teachers, aides, cooks, bus drivers become more challenging, discussions with Thornton Academy about expanding their TAMS program to include all Saco students transfers future infrastructure costs from the city to Thornton Academy. Before anyone flies off the handle, the proposed above example is just one idea about how to provide great expectations while saving the taxpayer from future school construction costs. After Cape Elizabeth and Scarborough just turned down two school bonds for over $1 million each, we need to think long-term and strategically. If our community is opposed to large-scale housing projects, the challenges will become greater and more costly. Single-family homes alone help create the bedroom community and increase the burden on the taxpayer. Building supplies and labor costs, let's face it, will not get cheaper moving forward. If the city uses the Claire parcels for the school construction project, which is currently in the works, then the city will have no more suitable land for other commercial entities like Hancock Lumber or Ready Seafood currently on Route 1. Before the school bond next year, there will be a straw poll for the community to participate in. I urge you to get involved and informed. By the way, getting involved, in my opinion, is not through special interest social media circles. Getting involved, to me, means going to the meetings, reading the documents, asking the questions, and contacting your representatives and staff. Democracy means everyone has a say, but doesn't guarantee a certain outcome. During my administration, we updated our 40-year-old zoning ordinance and completed the comprehensive plan for the future. These challenges didn't come without its shares of ups and downs, and if you paid attention, you saw that over the past couple of years. But once we came to realize that not every situation or issue can be put into the four corners of a document, the clarity allowed us to focus on amendments to strengthen and enhance our ordinances for the future. Although all the studies, zoning Sherat Bridge 2025, et cetera, talk about the community wanting things to do and entertainment in our city, we are still challenged by the balance scales of risk versus reward. The developer or business owner has to see the reward is greater than the risk. Major businesses, along with eating and entertainment options, are opening in Scarborough, Westbrook, Bitterford, due to their large-scale multi-unit housing initiatives. If we desire more businesses to move to or open in Saco, we need to be amenable to multi-unit growth options. However, if we are only favoring affordable housing, please explain what that means. What is affordable to one person is not necessarily affordable to another. In my opinion, we need a healthy mix of housing to entice movement in the current population, downsizing, upsizing, for example, and general growth from the outside. Growth is a controversial topic for some, as nobody likes change. Change can be beneficial and challenging at the same time, but that one constant thing in life is change. I bet there was opposition to Hillview Heights when first proposed, but that little area has produced many kids and handed out their fair share of Halloween candy over the years. My point is change will always be a challenge, but stagnation does nothing to help the greater good of our community. I would be remiss in my duties if I didn't mention our city and school staff. While some I interacted with more than others, I would like to thank all of you for your service to the community. Our city is so blessed to have the talented and experienced staff who are working on you and your children's behalf every day. Many of the previous discussed or future initiatives would not be possible without their ability to adapt and solve problems. With the labor shortage affecting municipalities as well as private industry, please be kind to those hard-working individuals. Thanks to the vitriol of some, more and more individuals are not seeking employment in the public service environment. We can and must do better to treat our staff with the respect and deference they deserve. Recently, the city council unanimously approved my appointment of John Bohenko for city administrator. His 25 years of experience in a similar-sized community will help guide the city of Saco through future challenges. To all our volunteers serving on committees and subsequent entities, thank you so much for your service to the community. The heart and the soul of our community is its volunteers. You all give so much of yourselves to Saco and should feel proud of all your accomplishments. Working with Age Friendly Saco, they were able to create an on-demand microtransit option for our seniors and those needing assistance. Program has been a huge success. As a result, Age Friendly Saco has expanded service and obtained a grant for a new vehicle. In this day and age, partnering is essential for progress. Bitterford Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit, or B-S-A-B as it's called, as part of a grant initiative, will be launching an additional microtransit service in 2024, 2025, depending on the labor market. Partnering with County of York, we were able to create an organization that will have a dredge and operate as an independent agency for the southern Maine coastline and waterways. In closing, I would like to thank the city council and the school board for putting up with me for the last four years. Thank you to all the staff, volunteers, and residents who supported, challenged, and gave me their time and vote. Thank you to my wonderful and caring family and friends for your support and, from time to time, unsolicited advice. Although this is farewell, believe me, it's not goodbye forever. The old adage says, "The goal is to leave it better than you found it." Well, I can say firmly, well, I can firmly say, with all our endeavors together, mission accomplished. And so with that, I would like to congratulate Deputy Mayor-elect, Mayor-elect Jody McPhail, and all the other counselors who were reelected, all the school board members that were really reelected, and then again, thank you to the outgoing school board members, and thank you for the generous gift. And with that, we will move on to item B, action items, and that is the swearing-in of elected officials. So I'd like to bring up the clerk. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I don't think I've ever gotten a standing ovation in this room, so thank you for that. It might be my night going out, but finally it happened, right? So thank you. We haven't, that's right. That's right. It's on tape. So with that, I'd like to bring down Clerk Hughes for the official swearing-in of Mayor-elect Jody McPhail and all the counselors that are here and that stood for election this year. So Counselor Johnston, Counselor Parks, Counselor-elect Parks. Come on up, Counselor-elect Parks. Oh, are we doing, okay. We're going to do mayor first. So once there's, once, as I've been instructed to do, once everyone is sworn in, you'll line up here, there'll be a couple of photos, and then there'll be a switch-off where the new mayor will take over, new counselors will be seated, and myself, Jim, will kind of mosey on. Oh, Jim already went. Clerk Hughes, please, please proceed.
Have you raised your right hand? Do you, Jody McPhail, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the State of Maine, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Saco, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of mayor? Congratulations.[1776.83]
Now, we will bring up Councilor Johnston and Councilor-elect Parks.
Have you both raised your right hand? Do you, Joshua Parks and Nathan Johnston, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Maine? And that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Saco? And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of city council for your respective ward? Congratulations to you both.
Gentlemen, don't call far. Gentlemen. Josh, Councilor Parks, please come up and stand over here. Now, we're gonna bring up School Board Member Truman, School Board Member Preble, and School Board Member-elect Kevin Roach.
Have you raised your right hand? Do you, Kevin Roach, Jennifer Preble, and Sarah Truman solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution and will obey the laws of the United States and the state of Maine? And that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Saco? And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of school board for your respective ward? Congratulations.
Thank you very much, school board members. Thank you. You can go back and take a seat. Counselors and mayor, please come forward.
Thank you, everyone. First off, I would like to thank outgoing Mayor Bill Doyle for his years of service to our community. His commitment to Saco cannot be questioned. Getting to know him over the few years, I know how much he loves and cares for his hometown. He has been a trusted voice over the years as councillor and most recently as mayor. I am sure that he will continue to give back. And on behalf of myself, the council, and the city of Saco, we present to you with this gift of our serest appreciation and gratitude. Good evening and welcome, everyone. First off, I'm not as long-winded as Mayor Doyle. So this is gonna be short and sweet. But first off, I would like again to thank Bill for his service to our community. I would also like to thank outgoing councillor Jim Purdy, who has been a valued and trusted member of the city council for the last four years. And welcome our new city councillor, Ward Two, Joshua Parks. And I look forward to working with you, Joshua. Now, as we move on, I want to remind everyone that this is "A Government of the People, by the people, and for the people," as quoted by President Lincoln. While I served as councillor, I always took the time to listen to all of the residents. They elected us to represent them. Their voice matters, and it should be heard. I thank my fellow city councillors and all who have served on the city's boards and commissions. I would also like to thank you, all of the unsung heroes and volunteers who have given so much of their time to groups like SOS, Age Friendly, and Saco Main Street, just to name a few. To those who volunteer at their churches, schools, and the food pantry, to those who have served up to, for those who have showed up to years of city meetings to support their neighborhoods, and to those who are still working on making our streets and pedestrians safe, I commend you all. They say it takes a village, and we are in one of those times. Where we will, where we will all need to work together and move Saco forward to create a city that we all can be proud of. Thank you. And at this time, we are going to take a quick ten-minute recess while we prepare for the continuation of the council meeting and the joint school board training.
Everyone. Okay, to continue the agenda, we are going into Action Item D, which is the election of deputy mayor. And that has been assigned to Councilor Nathan Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council shall elect from its membership a deputy mayor who shall exercise all powers of the mayor during temporary absence or disability of the mayor. In the event of a vacancy in the office of the mayor, the deputy mayor shall assume the office of mayor with all the duties and obligations of that office in accordance with the provisions of Section 2.06(c)(1). Staff recommends the election of deputy mayor. Be it ordered that the City Council move to elect Councilor Archer as deputy mayor of the City of Saco for the term of one year commencing December 4th, 2023. I move to approve the order.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston to appoint Marshall Archer as deputy mayor, seconded by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Going to start on the left this time to be able to warm in Councilor Parks a little bit. Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Councilor Archer is not available tonight, but we will let him know. Okay, and now we have Action Item E, which is the confirmation of council liaisons and appointments to committees. And that is also assigned to Councilor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is the practice of the City Council to have council members serve as a liaison with city boards, committees, and commissions. By code, some committees and boards include voting rights. The mayor has made updates to the individuals appointed to these bodies and is seeking council confirmation. The city solicitor has vetted this process of changing appointments. The rules and order of business contains a brief description of these boards, committees, and commissions. Staff recommends approval. Be it ordered that the City Council approve the mayor's appointments as detailed in the document titled "Saco City Council Liaisons and Appointments to Committees", December 4th, 2023.
Motion has been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Was it? Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Okay, we're going to go with roll call vote. Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
And Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Okay, that now brings us to our joint school board meeting and training. And first up, we do have an updated timeline and requirements for the June 2024 referendum with Bill Stockmeyer, Drummond, and Woodson.
All right, good evening, everybody. Before Bill steps up, I just wanted to thank you all for your service. And we have kind of probably the most important six-month stretch for school construction that we possibly could have without actually putting a shovel into the ground. And tonight, I've asked Bill from Drummond and Woodson, and you've seen part of this before, also having Rob and Norm here from Oak Point to talk about the processes that we will go through over the next six months, what we have to do in order to make the June ballot, but also just kind of fill you in a little bit of what do we do at these certain meetings. We're hoping that if everything goes well tomorrow, that we'll be releasing a scheduled meeting for December 14th for a straw poll. And that will be kind of the kickoff to where we go through this next six months of how we can move this forward and this process forward for the City of Saco. So, Bill.
This is on?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thank you, Jeremy. We've been working on a sort of a comprehensive timeline for the project. As you can see, it's a multifaceted timeline with different responsible parties for different steps. And I'm going to take you through it. And as we get through each chunk, if you will, of the timeline, Norm LeMire from your Architect Oak Point Associates will have a couple of comments from the architect's perspective. As you can see, this timeline is color-coded for the responsible party for each step. You can also see across the top of the first page, the different columns. I'm just trying to orient you as to this somewhat complicated document. The first column is the step number. The second describes the approval item or milestone item for that step. The third column is the responsible party or parties. The fourth column is our legal references where applicable for legal requirements. The fifth column is our working date for completion or for an approval based on a June 11, 2024 referendum date. And the last column is where needed, an update on the status or in some cases, some notes. There are 35, 40 steps on this timeline, and indeed, there are probably 4,000 steps or more to build a school, but these are the major ones to get to construction. Maybe to help organize things a little bit, it's helpful to take it in chunks or bite-sized pieces. So, for your reference, step one is essentially the assembly of the real estate, of the site. And that takes up the first page. Steps two to six will get us to State Board of Education's site approval. Those are, so steps two to six are the steps necessary to achieve that landmark, that approval from the state board. They agree with the site of the project. Steps seven to 11 get us to what's called concept approval, which is, Norm can explain in greater detail, but is basically the functionality of the project, the intended function of the project, and critically, the project budget set by the State Board of Education. Steps 12 to 22 are the steps that the city needs to take to conduct a referendum. And as you can see, it's a multi-step process to complete the referendum, and that's the voter approval of the project. Steps 23 to 34 is really just an outline of the major milestones for the construction contract, 23 to 34 for the construction contract, and steps 35 to 40 for the construction of the project. So, that's taking it in chunks. So, where are we right now? Going back to the first page, the site is almost all assembled. The site consists of property that the city has under option with TNT leasing, and that lease is in place through June 30th. So, if all goes well and the referendum passes, we will exercise the option and then proceed to close after June 30th. The second component of the site are seven parcels of city land on Portland Road, which the council dedicated last April 3rd. And then third, and still in process, are some temporary construction easements that Oak Point has identified that we will need to build the project. So, that's the project site. Then, for site approval, steps two through six, basically, that process involves a straw poll, which is a meeting of the school committee with the public where an informal vote is taken on whether the public approves this project. It's not really a binding vote in any sense. It's a demonstration of public support. It's required by the State Board of Education rules prior to the state board approving the site. If you will, an informal way of taking the temperature of the public, right? And, or, and has due diligence been done in the public's eyes? Following the straw poll, there's a process of the Department of Education staff then recommending the site to the state board, the state board construction subcommittee approving the site, and finally, and step six, site approval by the State Board of Education. And Norm, did you have any comments?
I just wanted to say that we completed the site application and have handed it into the Department of Education. They have given us some comments, and we, as Jeremy mentioned, will be meeting with them tomorrow to discuss those comments and make sure we have everything in line for them. Hopefully, they'll give us a recommendation to move forward with the school construction committee and the state board right after that. Scheduling a straw poll vote, as both Jeremy and Bill mentioned. And that gives everybody the opportunity to show community support for this so we can present that when we talk to the State Board of Education.
Thanks, Norman. I guess I should take questions if there are any at any point.
Do we have any questions for Attorney Stockmeyer? Council Berman?
Yeah, the 10 easements needed for construction, do we have a sense of what those are? Whether the city is paying for them? Whether there are any hurdles in acquiring them?
I can probably answer. I couldn't answer most of it.
Yeah, go ahead. One of our real estate lawyers is handling that for me, so I can't get into specifics, but maybe, Jeremy, you can.
So, essentially, Councilor Berman, these are temporary easements that would not take property based off our application, and it would be for fixing drainage sidewalks, those types of pieces. Jonah from Oak Point and Assistant Superintendent Parkers and I have visited all property owners, presented them with written information, and let's say, like, 90% had a face-to-face meeting to be able to talk through what the options on their property would be. Tomorrow, at CK Byrne School, we are having a meeting for the abutters if they want to come together and learn more about the process. So, we've been working through those pieces. Again, a lot of it does depend on what we have now as plans for the traffic permit. Additionally, we've worked with Patrick Fox and his crew, and Emily to just make sure that we are following the processes, reaching out, and trying to move this, you know, as quickly as possible while making sure we have personal contact with people out there and not just like a letter in the mail without having them know us.
Any other questions or comments? Look like we're seeing any.
I'll set then on that. Then, in steps seven through 11, those are the steps necessary for concept approval. And as you can see, we're expecting concept approval at the state board meeting on March 13, 2024. The concept approval, the architects can always explain this better than I, but basically, it's, so what's the solution to the need? You know, what's entailed? And a project budget. As you can well imagine, quite a lot of work goes into the project budget. There's a lot of negotiation with staff at the Department of Education that the architect conducts on your behalf with the school superintendent also participating. So, I'll let Norm talk to you about that a little bit.
So, the concept has been developed in a parallel path with the site selection. So, we're very far along in that right now. So, we're anticipating going for concept approval two months after the site selection, site approval, which is the quickest we can move according to the state guidelines. At this point, what we're doing is, we're going to, we've, as you know, we've presented what the floor plans look like and given you an idea of what the buildings are going to look like. We've established all the spaces within the building. We're going to continue to develop that a little further, come up with the cost of the building, and need to finalize the budget, which will be the number that will be used in the referendum.
I do also think that it's important that while many communities might just be working with one building, this is a scenario where we have two parallel tracks happening, a state project and a locally funded project to try to solve, you know, many of the challenges that we've talked about that. Now, I know that there was a number that was mentioned earlier in the meeting. Let's just remember that these are very fluid situations because sometimes the costs of things one week are not exactly the cost of things the next week. And, you know, by the time we get to this process, maybe we'll be in a very different environment than we are today. But what we can say is that we are a community that is going to be very lucky in the fact that our numbers will not be nearly what those of some of our neighboring communities were during the last couple of budget cycles. And we will be having one project that is a significant funding option coming from the state with another piece. So, I think that is important to remember is that we're trying to do two things kind of on parallel tracks that have different funding sources.
I'd also mention there's a second straw poll in step nine on the project concept. So, again, another informal taking of the temperature of the public.
Do we have any questions or comments on that section?
Following concept approval, it comes the referendum. And this is where the voters of the city have their say on the project and as well as the locally funded portion of the project or the other school, so to speak. And often, these projects, even if there's just one school, has two components, what's called a state-local component, which is a state subsidized component of a project. And then, should there be some components that are not, that the state will not participate in? There could be a, what's called a local-only component. All the bonds are indistinguishable. You issue a certain number of bonds, but as to the local-only bond portion, that would be for the city to pay. And that could be anything from, the state will subsidize the fair market value of the real estate if the seller demands a price or has a price higher than that to sell his real estate. That would be a local-only component, but bonded over 20 years. If the community wanted a larger gym, then the state will subsidize. Then, that extra-sized gym, extra-sized gym would be a local-only component. I've had projects where there was a community emergency need tied to the building. That was a local-only component. And that will all go to the voters as a, at the same referendum. On this timeline, starting with item 12, we'll be drafting a proposed bond order for the council. First reading is proposed for March 18. I think your schedule's not set yet, so please don't hold us to that. I was just told before the meeting the schedule's not set, so these, again, are working dates, okay? These dates would work. If there's a regularly scheduled meeting in proximity to this working date, and we can confirm that that regularly scheduled meeting date works, we would be in favor of moving it to that regularly scheduled meeting. Then, there's posting and publishing of the bond order, submitting the question to the vendor, which is not a legal step, but increasingly is a step with legal ramifications. The vendor or vendors responsible for preparing absentee ballots seem to require longer and longer periods of time to get the absentee ballots prepared so that they're ready 30 days before. So, while not a legal step, we're now including this on our timeline as if it was because if you can't get the ballots, you can't, you know, you can't meet your timeline. Second reading, which is the public hearing, is step 17, working date of May 6th. And then, you have an absentee ballot voting period and a referendum on June 11, 2024. So, that's that piece of it. Norm, you didn't have, did you have any comments on, you wanted to talk about the second public hearing?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to mention was that at the public hearing, that gives us one more opportunity to present the entire project to the community so the voters know what they're voting on. So, we'll do an entire presentation of the site and the building and the costs associated with it.
Any question about that piece of it?
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. I had two questions, but reading further down, I answered my own question. Councilor Hatch and I previously tonight were discussing whether or not there was a percentage of voters needed to pass this bond, and it appears as though it's 20% of the last gubernatorial election, which is a significant amount of individuals, I would say. So, I think we need to be cognizant of getting the word out to voters, particularly in June. The question I have, though, so whereas we have the state-funded and a local-funded two schools, will the bond question, you described the state bond question being split. Will there be a subsequent, separate bond question for the city-funded portion?
There's a political aspect to that, and then there's a practical aspect to that. Let me address the practical one first. If one project is not doable without the other project, then it makes a lot of sense to put them in the same question so you don't get inconsistent voting results leading you with the inability to do the project, so to speak. If that's not the case, if they operate independently, then it's a political decision. I will say that there are mixed results with having a separate question for a local-only element or a local-only project element in this case. I've had referenda with as many as five separate questions with a state-local, state-subsidized question, and four different local-only, all passed. We recently had in SAD 49, they took the money for the local-only piece of the state project, the larger gym for basketball and community basketball on weekends and that kind of thing, put them in separate questions. The local-only piece failed. On the other hand, in Wyndham, they put, Wyndham had a very large percentage of local-only. They had, I believe, something like $100 million in state-local and $30 million in local-only. They put it in a single question, and it passed. So, it's a, it's a political decision, and I would only caution that you can get mixed results if you put them in separate questions. It might work, it might not. Depending on your definition of worked, of course.
Does that answer your question, Council Johnson? So, as the council will be able to discuss the best way to present it on the bond and how the wording should be set.
Right, right. I mean, I will also say about the state-local piece, there can be a lot of confusion because as it, from the terminology, you can tell there's a local share. Here's how that works, however. Saco is already paying its maximum local cost-to-year expectation under the school funding formula. Let's say, the best way to think of this is, remember in science class with a graduated cylinder? Remember those graduated cylinders? The funding formula hands you a graduated cylinder of a certain size. And then, it's asked, can you afford to fill it yourself? And you have to fill it up to, let's say, 20 milliliters. That's the maximum you can be afford to put into that cylinder with local tax dollars. The rest of that, of that cylinder is filled with state dollars. Now, just put aside additional local funds. We all know that's all state dollars. When you get a project approved, let's say the annual debt services, I'm just going to pick $1 million, just to pick a round number. The state gives you a larger graduated cylinder. It can fit an extra $1 million in the cylinder. But your share is still the exact cylinder, but your share is still the exact same 20 milliliters, because you were paying the maximum, and you will be paying the maximum, and the maximum doesn't change. So while it's true that you are paying a share of a larger amount, it's a smaller percentage of a larger amount, and it's the same dollar amount, all things being equal. So that's to say that that state-local portion of the project, which is going to be a much larger portion, creates a very good deal for the taxpayer, no matter which way you decide to go. Good? All right. And then, some might say that building the school is actually a complicated process. I think I've reduced it down to about three steps here. So this is kind of like that famous New York Magazine comedy with the world from the perspective of someone in New York, where you see a giant Manhattan, and maybe you see Long Island, and the rest of the world is kind of irrelevant. So this is, schedule is not in proportion to the complexity, and certainly we all know that contractors have a very difficult and complex task. But following the referendum, we have some steps to, I guess I should say, the project goes out to bid, and following that, depending on how the bids come in, two things can happen, or three things can happen. One is you can be just fine where you are. Second, and we hope this doesn't happen, if the bids come in high, you may have to do what's called value engineering, which is usually involves either coming up with other funding sources or more likely taking certain things out of the project to meet the budget. Or third, if the bids come in low, the project is subject to an after-the-fact looksee by the Commissioner of Education, who can basically take those dollars off the table and reduce the amount so that the state isn't paying for project elements, extra project elements, if the bids come in low, which, you know, is not unfair, although we wish, we'd like to get those extra project elements. That's, that's how that works. So after, so that is a commissioner of final funding approval, not a state board approval. And then, following that, we start talking about the financing of the project and the construction of the project. And probably it's somewhat premature at this point to talk about that, although I certainly can. But Norm, did you have anything on bidding?
Just to give you a rough idea of the timeline, once the referendum passes, it'll probably take us about a year or so to, to create the construction documents and put that out to bid. Bid process is usually a little over a month, five, five or six weeks, and then the bids get evaluated. And, and from there, we're looking at the, the final funding approval, as Bill mentioned, where the, the numbers get tweaked and set. We, we look at all the spending that was done up to that point, finalize those numbers in sharpened pencils, so we're at the exact amount. And then finally, we're looking at probably two and a half years or so of construction time, depending on whether this is a one or two building project.
Counsel Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We're anticipating different bond referendum dates up until this point. Now we're at June. What happens if we miss June?
The referendum legally can occur on any date of the year. Often, these projects, because they're of great local interest and there's a desire to have as many voters participate as possible, they, they can often go to the next statewide voting date, which would be the following November. However, sometimes there are target dates for completing a project and getting schools started. You'll notice that on the last page, it's not exactly the case that the contractor has until Labor Day to finish, okay? So we have substantial completion date, number 36, to be, to be determined. After that, there are equipment vendors that have to come into the building, set up equipment, assemble equipment, so time has to be allowed for that. Then after that, there's a final punch list and work that has to be done to either replace stuff or correct stuff or finish stuff that wasn't done at final, at substantial completion. Now, following that, and this is often forgotten by contractors who are not experienced with school construction, then there's a period of time for staff occupancy and setup. Teachers can't just move in the day before school starts. So that's by way of saying that it's not always possible to wait six months to the next referendum date, because that could critically affect the entire schedule of the project. So that has to be weighed.
Thank you. I have one more question, too, if that's okay. When the state approved us on the list, was there a cost element in mind? And is there a maximum amount of state aid available? I think construction prices are changing dramatically during this period, and I'm wondering how that affects the state's share of funding, if at all.
So that'll be determined at your concept approval when, when there's a state budget, the cost of the project. So, you know, that, that will be set at that time. The availability of state funding depends upon a statute that caps the total amount of these school projects the state can contribute towards the aggregate debt service payments on all the projects it's funding over a 20-year bonding period. And I cannot remember the number off the top of my head, but projects are only placed upon the list, as yours has been for funding, when room exists under the cap for projected debt service for the project. And I think they, they guess very conservatively, so that they always stay beneath that statutory cap.
Does that answer your question? Anyone else?
Sorry, Madam Mayor.
School board member, yeah?
Maybe this is a question for Jeremy, but in terms of the bidding and the results, in your experience, how has that, have we rejected bids since they know what the budget is as they put in their bids? How does that process work?
Well, I think that it certainly doesn't always work in your favor, but like anything, sometimes in, in these scenarios, because you're going out to bond on a number, there's an amount that's kind of out there floating around. You also have a situation where these projects for a state project is highly scrutinized, too. And so, you know, I think that what we will be subject to is, is basically market conditions. 12 years ago, when I became superintendent and they were finishing the project in Bedford, that was a time where the economy was kind of on a downturn and things came under. Recently, some of the revolving renovation projects that we've done, we haven't been so lucky on, on those numbers. And, you know, everything seems to ebb and flow, and, you know, where it will be at this time, we can only, we, we can only guess what will happen. We'll have, know that we will have had a presidential election. It will be six months after that when, when bids are going out. But as part of that public process, is they know your max, they kind of know what you're been allotted.
And is there, as a follow-up, is there any deadline that we need to obligate these funds by if we were to reject the bids? Or is that kind of open-ended?
So we would be working, obviously, the Department of Education will be working hand-in-hand, because it goes back to the piece that the commissioner, it does have some play in what can happen, and that we're operating underneath a debt limit that they have. So a lot of this is calculated out, because as they allow projects to move forward into phases, they're looking, their budgets and their forecasts forward, and allowing some of that to flow on a, on a rate that they know that they can stay under that. And I think they're very well aware of, again, they're so connected to what all of the school projects all throughout the state are, are, you know, amounting to, and so they've got a pretty good handle on those pieces.
I could offer a couple more comments. There is a legal deadline on step 33 of awarding a construction contract within nine months after the commissioner, after design and funding approval by the state board. So the design and funding approval is step 30, 28, and so you have nine months to get from step 28 to step 33. That being said, in my experience, if there were a problem where you needed to value engineer, or if the bids came in high, the state would work with you on that. And your question may also have been prompted by the convolutions of the construction market during the COVID period, where labor supply was extremely limited, and construction costs for items like steel just seemed to go, wood seemed to go through the roof. You're helped by the fact that you're in southern Maine, it was much worse in northern Maine. And it also, I would rely on Norm more, but I seems, I think we're sort of coming out of that. The projects seem to be coming back in where they should, but...
Right. I, I know that the, the last state project that just came, bids just came in, in Romford, they came in within the budget, so things are looking much better than they had been.
Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, please continue.
Excuse me, Mayor McPhill, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's all right, thank you. I'm just trying to get my head around the pool of contractors that would have the depth and breadth of experience to do a project as complicated as this one is and the magnitude that it is. I'm assuming that we would be expecting bids to come in from more of a regional population of contractors? And I'm just trying to figure out what, you know, is that a large pool? Are we, are we expecting a lot of bids? Or we got a small subset of contractors who are poised and ready and experienced to do these kinds of school projects? Just a general, general comment.
Yeah, probably as many as half a dozen, but probably four to four or five.
Four or five would be good. You'd also like to see the bids be tight, obviously. If they're coming in tight, you have certainty that someone has an underbid. Underbidding's not great, because it means that someone may have left something out their bid, out of their bid, which can lead to problems during the construction. So if you've got enough and you see that they're tight, you generally feel pretty good about that.
Any other questions from council or school board? Okay, not seeing any. And does that complete that item? Okay, great. Next, item number two, we have the construction project update from Oak Point Associates.
So essentially, we kind of mixed all of those. We do have a few pieces that we'd like to show you from the Oakport side of, side of things, as Norm gets ready. I was prepared to put some of that information up on the screen, just in case we needed So we, we've given you a presentation of where, where we are with the building design, but we can go over these things and give you an update. This is the, the site we've been talking about. I don't know if Jonah or Rob want to have anything specific to say about these? Okay. I'm showing the two buildings on, on the site, the pre-K and K and the one through five. And this is Route 1, where there's access from Millbrook into the site, and another access point right off of Route 1. We're working with the Department of Transportation on how, how those are working and getting all the details worked out. This is an overview of, of how the two buildings will look together on the site. The one-story building over here being the pre-K and K, and then the two-story, oops, sorry about that, building with the, the classroom wings for the first and second grade and third through fifth grade. The floor plan of the, the larger of the two buildings. Main entrance, another entrance for the, the students who come off the bus. This is more of the public zone, cafeteria, gymnasium, music, central office, and then the classroom wings off to the side, large courtyard in between. On, on that slide, I would just draw your attention to, I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but there are a couple of areas that are kind of hatched, they are shaded a little bit. The state project building is approximately 160,000 square feet in total, and as we looked at the additional space that we would be asking the community to try to look at, a little bit larger of a gymnasium and a little bit larger of a cafeteria, only approximately 5,000 of that 160,000 building would be for additional space on, on a local piece. We had a lot of conversation with Ryan Summer, rec director, to think about, we know how important aftercare is in our community and with a new location, and how do we set up a space that we could have offices for the rec program for some of those pieces, because no one loves to share space, and it can be very difficult after school. And so we spent a lot of time kind of looking at that public aspect of where the building would be and how that after hours, there'll be plenty of doors that will be able to be closed and locked and, and keep people in that front section and allow our residents and aftercare to, to enter from one side and give the Parks and Recs really a, a good place to work out of, because when you look at probably 150 to 200 of our kiddos after school every single day, that's a pretty important component. And for those who have visited our Parks and Recs program now, you know at Burn School, it's very tough for them to program appropriately with check-in and checkout in the hallway. And so we wanted to make sure those pieces were there, but I think the, the team in Oak Point and everybody who gave feedback to think that 5,000 square feet out of 160,000 above and beyond is, is where we sit today. So these are some elevations of, of the one through five building. Large classroom wing, windows along each of the exterior walls of the classrooms, the STEM area over here towards the front of the building. On this elevation, south elevation, you have the gymnasium, the, the other classroom wing. This is the, the main entrance to the building on the west side, with the art and music rooms to the side, cafeteria to the front of the building with an outdoor seating area underneath the canopy. And the east side of the building is facing a courtyard that exists between the two classroom These are some perspectives of the, of the... These are some perspectives of the same building, looking from at the north elevation towards the west entrance as well, looking across this being the pre-KK building and looking towards the main entrance of the elementary school. And this is that back courtyard that I mentioned. There's another courtyard tucked in between that's completely surrounded by building elements. This kind of gives you an eye-level perspective of the same parts of the building, the main entrance, bus entrance and cafeteria and the courtyards. This is the pre-KK building with classroom wings, kindergarten classroom wing towards the front main entrance, pre-K wing towards the back, close to the multipurpose room and kitchen. This allows us to serve the students lunch in their classrooms or in the open areas where the kindergarten kids could actually walk to the cafeteria to eat. There's a small presentation area here where students can sit and watch a presentation or give a small performance. Elevations of this building, the main entrance and classroom wings to either side, back side of the building where the multipurpose room is, lots of daylight into there. We're showing clear-story windows at the peak of these classroom wing roofs to let daylight into the corridors. And then, these are the ends of the building where we'll also have courtyards similar to what we had in the other building. Then perspectives of the same, where you can better see where these courtyards exist in the main entrance. Any questions?
Any questions or comment from council or school board? Nope, not seeing any. Thank you for that presentation. Okay, does that conclude updates on the school project? All righty, so next on the agenda, we do have the joint ethics and FOA training, and that is going to be done by city solicitor, city solicitor Tim Murphy.
Good evening, mayor, congratulations. Sorry I missed the earlier portion of the meeting, I would thank you before, congratulated you. I'd like to keep this to 30 minutes. It's going to be broken into two segments. We will start with the discussion about the Maine's Freedom of Access Act, and then I'll switch over to some discussion about ethics. School board and council members, feel free to raise your hand, ask questions. I would appreciate those inquiries, very much so. For those of you who've sat through this before, I'll apologize now. For those of you who are new and may still have hope in your heart, I will try to inform you if I can. It is an obligation here in Maine to inform our public officials about these two key areas, ethics and Maine's Freedom of Access Act. So, we do this as a routine matter here. And I'm going to start with Maine's Freedom of Ethics, Maine's Freedom of Access Act, also known as FOA. You'll hear it referred to quite often that way. There are materials in your package that outline what I'm going to talk to you about, but you can take those home and share them with family members. I'm sure they're waiting for them right now. FOA, as many of you know, is important here in Maine. The courts have stressed and legislature has stressed that Maine citizens are to have access to their government. And access takes, really, is provided in two means, takes two forms. It's both access to these types of meetings, and then there's access to the public records that our city officials produce. So, those are the two elements of FOA. Our meetings need to be open, and we have to provide access to our public records. The Maine courts have been very, very clear. The courts tell us they will err on the side of openness and disclosure. And correspondingly, state statutes which restrict or limit access are to be construed and read narrowly. So, for instance, while we have an open meeting law, both of your bodies are allowed to go into executive session when certain matters require it. And at certain times, it's appropriate to go into executive session. So, for instance, if you're negotiating a contract or a real estate purchase and public disclosure would alter or affect your bargaining position, you don't want to be doing that out in open. So, the law allows you to go into executive session. Again, there are strict controls on this, and it's meant to be an exception rather than the rule. When push comes to shove, the courts will interpret openness broadly and will correspondingly limit those situations where you can go into executive session or anything else that restricts access. Typically, it takes a vote of three fifths of the members of the body to go into executive session. That's one condition. The purpose of the executive session has to be clear. It has to be made known before the body goes into executive session and that's stated. So, we are going to go into executive session to do X, and it's not to eat french fries. That wouldn't be appropriate. It has to be to discuss something that's set out in the statute. When you're in executive session, since this is an exception to the open records and open meetings and is not favored, you are limited to only discussing what your subject matter is. Once you go into executive session, let's say it's to purchase real estate for a school project like this, that's what you're limited to. You're not allowed to branch off while you're there together and say, you know, while we're here, let's also talk about the city administrator, or let's talk about the planning department, or let's talk about how fire was late to a call, which by the way, never happens. Those things you can't do. The FOA law requires you stay to the topic and you limit it to that. When the executive session ends, you come out of the executive session. It's key that you not vote or take any action in executive session. Those, again, because we, courts favor, the legislature favors public access, we take official acts out in the open. We don't hold secret votes, we don't hold secret meetings. That would violate FOA. So, if in fact, there is something you need to do once you come out of executive session, such as instruct the city administrator to go forward and purchase that land you need for a new school building, you would then come out, the council would come out of executive session and then would discuss it openly, and a vote would be taken which could be recorded here before the cameras. So, part of being open are simple things like public notice. Where are meetings going to happen? When are meetings going to happen? It's not a very open government if you don't let the citizens know when and where the meetings are being held. So, some of these things just are second nature now to city staff, but they are based in the FOA law. There's a reason why we have to get notices out in advance. There's a reason why we have to let people know where the meeting is. Because if you don't, you're essentially defeating the purpose of the FOA. You're defeating the purpose of open meetings if the citizens don't know where they are and don't know to be there. It's important to keep in mind that meetings can occur even outside where you're holding a meeting. So, tonight, we're here in the council chambers. But if three of more of you discuss a public matter privately on the side at your home, that can arguably become a public meeting, in which case it was a not noticed public meeting, because no one was aware you were meeting at your house with two of your colleagues. So, you have to be very careful. The FOA law requires that we discuss our public business in the public forum where the public has access to hearing what's going on. It is, as I say every year, my suggestion, my guidance, my prayer, that you not take to social media to discuss matters of the public interest. If you, as public officials, are going to be discussing something, do it here in the public body where the citizens can hear what you have to say and can gauge where you're going. And further, it allows them at least opportunity to participate in what you're doing. When you hold meetings outside of these rooms or outside of these forums, you're essentially preventing the citizens from their fair opportunity to know what's going on and potentially to participate. So, be careful. All of your emails, whether they're on your private phone, private computer, if you have social media accounts, if you're conducting business on those vehicles and in those forums, you can inadvertently make your private matters suddenly become public. And with all caution, I suggest that unless you want to see it on the front page of the paper, best not to say it. Because FOA may end up, we receive FOA requests all the time. I think, I was talking to the police chief the other day, and he said, let's see, we're last week of November, he was up to 265 FOA requests. That's just the police department. Now, the city clerk's here, she could probably inform you as the total number the city has received. Now, we want the citizens to have interest in what's going on, but understand that there are a lot of citizens asking a lot of questions, which is their right. But that requires that city officials, the clerk's office, start initiation to see what records might be out there or what meetings have been held. And if you've participated in something, your private conversations could become part of that discovery. Are there limitations to open meetings? Well, yes, as discussed earlier, there are executive sessions. And also, we don't, we don't, open meetings can be sometimes misunderstood. They're not the open invitation for the citizens to participate. In all settings, you're still, we're representative government. You all have been elected to do the hard work of the citizens. You're their representatives. So, they are entrusting you to manage and do most of the day-to-day business of governing the city, both on the school side and on the city side. So, there are a few cases where the citizens can participate. We have public hearings, for instance. In those cases, the citizens are granted the opportunity to participate on a matter. And then, there are cases where on the council agenda, you have public comments set aside, again, to allow the citizens opportunity to come and express their thoughts and concerns. These are above and beyond what the open meeting requires. These are just good governance steps, because we want to hear what's of concern to the citizens. But that's not the same as meaning they have the right, the citizens have a right to participate and to run the meetings, to make motions and to participate as members. We don't, the FOA doesn't mean we've stopped being representative government. The FOA doesn't mean you've been stripped of your ultimate authorities to make the decisions. So, the school board, for instance, you have to vote. Ultimately, it comes down to you. Same with the city council. The citizens can come, they can listen, and in those sections where they are allowed to participate, you can hear what they have to say. But ultimately, things fall back upon you to make the decisions. Meetings are recorded. Again, there are citizens that can't be at every meeting, but we record them so there's a record that they can come and see what their government did. And so, that's very important. Mayor, if I, I can't see behind me. I don't know when I start, but I'm at about 15 minutes. I'll switch.
Actually, 10, I think.
I got how much? I'm 10 in?
Oh, 10 minutes, sorry.
Thank you. So, the other aspect of FOA, first of all, is this open meetings idea, which we all favor and support. The other aspect is, as I mentioned earlier, records. The public has access to our records, to what we do on a day-to-day basis, what we've accomplished, what records do we produce? And that would apply equally to the schools. The law broadly defines public records. Virtually, almost all the things that government officials do can become a public record. There are exemptions. There's, by statute, records that are exempted and would not necessarily have to be produced. But on balance, in most cases, the courts, as I noted earlier, are going to err on the side of disclosure. If the city asserts a record cannot be produced, we have the burden of establishing that. It's not the burden of the citizen to prove that they were right. It's our burden to prove that a record, if it's not going to be disclosed, is covered. And that's a fair balance. Typical example would be in a lawsuit. If the city is sued, there may be records that are privileged that were produced by the attorneys in anticipation, that may discuss legal strategy. That'd be a perfect example, where those records would not be subject to FOA. Another misconception is related to records is that we're required to produce records, but there can be, it's common to think that it's an unfettered obligation, that the city has this burden, but it doesn't quite work like that. Oftentimes, we have to advise the citizens that, well, the request you're making is a totally legitimate request, we're happy to respond, but it's going to take us 10 hours to assemble all the records, to copy them, and to then give them to you. So, the FOA law allows us to say, okay, here's what the costs of those hours of time are, staff time, and here's the copying charge. And then, the citizen can decide if in fact, they want to tailor that request or potentially expand on it. Oftentimes, if the request is costly, the city can say, we would like the money upfront. And the clerk's office has done that on many occasions. So, it's not an unlimited, FOA is not unlimited. There's access to records, but City Hall doesn't have to stop and set itself to this one task at no cost to the citizen. So, if labor time is going to be greater than two hours, we can assess the citizens for that time. And the fee is a modest one, it's $25 an hour. And this side view is, and I have argued is a fair, is a fair balance between the citizen's right to know and the need of the rest of the city staff to get on with doing the other important business of the day. So, that's how the legislature struck the balance. Another point to make with regard to these FOA records is that the city is required to produce the records as they exist. So, if we have records that exist on a certain format in a computer or in paper, that's how we're obliged to produce them. We aren't obliged to go out and create them into new formats or define new versions of them, simply because that's what someone might like. We may choose to do that if it's easy enough and it's helpful, but the city isn't obliged. So, when the public is given a right to records, it's records as they exist in their form, as they exist, as we keep them. So, again, it's the legislature striking a balance between the desire to have records, the obligation of the city to produce them, but not an unreasonable, you have to give them to me in any form that I ask for them. FOA doesn't work like that. So, again, the legislature's doing a balance. Lastly, public records can exist in multiple places, certainly here in the building. I was talking to the fire chief earlier. Records in his building, they don't have to be at City Hall to be public records. Records at PD, those are public records. The records are where the public officials are. So, oftentimes, you may have records in your own home, if they're on your city iPad or your city cellphone or whatever you use, those may have become records, in which case you have to disclose them if they are part and subject to the FOA request. We keep records at the dire library. Those are always typically there for the public to view. Those are very, very old records, but nonetheless, they are there. And in fact, on a couple of occasions, I've been over there to look for records. So, it's, keep in mind, Jeremy, where is it? What's your beach street address? Nine. They could be at the school department's office, they could be at the Burn School, the middle school, they can be all kinds of places. So, when we think of access to records, it's not simply here at City Hall. And they can, they can be in other places if you take records home, which I don't encourage you to do, it could be at your home as well. So, it, I've attached for you the key underlying statutes that direct the FOA. So it, I've attached for you the key underlying statutes that direct the FOA, so that you have them. Certainly, the statutes much, much longer, but the ones I've provided you are the keys that discuss these points. FOA is a law that's always evolving. There's always new case law regarding it. So occasionally, we have to amend what we say and come up with new ways of viewing the law. But right now, this is essentially the state of the law. And what's most pressing to know is that if we have a dispute that ever goes to court on a format, or if the schools do, the courts most likely decide on the side of disclosure. So that is my way of saying, seriously, be careful what you say and write in documents. They do come out. And I will say, you know, I've used this example in the past. There was a, one time I was in court and the plaintiff was complaining that a city official had described them as a "wascally wabbit," which at the time, the person thought was just a harmless, oh, he's charming character, you know, a wascally wabbit. The citizen didn't think being called a wascally wabbit was endearing. And I had what I like to call the judge's "look over the glasses" at me. And it's an uncomfortable position. And of course, we, I apologized, and that's not the only time we've had to do that. But this stuff will and can come out. So personal comments, don't, just don't, just don't go there. Be assured that they'll come out, they'll find their way out in the public through one FOA or another. And then an attorney like myself will have to go up and explain why they are there. And I prefer not to do that. And as I'm going to go now into ethics, it's a reminder and a good segue, because the citizens are really our customers. If we think of them as customers, if we think of our obligation as a city or a school board to deliver good customer service, why would we ever make a comment about a citizen? When I started bagging groceries at Shaw's when I was 16, I was given a list of 10 things, 10, we'll call them rules of ethics, 10 guides. Rule at the top was Mrs. Jones is always right. Do you know what rule number 10 was? Mrs. Jones is always right. She was the customer. We were being trained twice, both at the start and at the end, that your customer's personally taken care of, to be made happy, because then they'll come back and shop again at Shaw's. Same too here, at the city. These are our customers. We're in a customer service business now. It wasn't thought of that way in the past, but really, a lot of what we do is based on principles of customer service. And that shows in the city's ethics policy. And I applaud the council for adopting this, this code of ethics. The code is aspirational. And it's a guide that says, much of it, much of this says, these are important people, we need to treat them with courtesy and respect. When they're here at a meeting, they may be nervous. Help them. When they have a question, answer kindly. It's really, I think speaks well of the city that we've adopted this. And that this, the expectations of our public officials is that we will treat the citizen customers with dignity, that their requests are meaningful, and that they should be always treated with consideration and respect. And I can say, in my experience in this hall, that is the way I've seen our public officials act. I cannot recall a time when I have seen a public official here in Saco shout, raise their voice, or take any untoward action against a citizen. And that holds true with the current council. It's just not the way we've acted. But we've now stated that that's our policy, that those are our goals and objectives. And that was a worthy thing to do. So I commend to all of you, particularly the new people, that you read the ethics If you follow it, it's unlikely you will ever deviate into a problem area. I can assure you, you won't. Because it's a golden rule kind of document. It says very clearly, simple rules to follow. Let me direct you to Section 4 of that document, though, in particular. And it talks about an issue that's always of interest to government officials, and that's conflicts of interest, which is a large part of what we're doing in this ethics discussion, is trying to identify, spot, and handle conflicts of interest. And by the way, just a note here, if you have a question, an ethical question, or a concern, you have resources. On the city side, there's the city administrator, there are your colleagues, there's the mayor. And if those folks can't answer it, it'll percolate and come over to me. And the same on the school board side, we have a highly experienced superintendent. It's probably not a matter he hasn't seen or heard before. So, again, go to your resource. If the superintendent can't help you... Bill Stockmeyer's a highly experienced attorney. And there are other additional attorneys at Drummond-Woodsom that are well-qualified to answer those questions. And if they're unavailable, I'll be happy to help and pitch in. So there are resources available when questions and doubt arises. But in most cases, there isn't doubt. In most cases, we tend to know what the ethical obligations are. And most often, they focus around this issue of conflicts of interest. So that first section under Number 4 defines out what city officials shouldn't do when there's an actual conflict of interest. You should not deliberate, act on, approve, disapprove, or recommend any matter, dot, 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 in which that individual has or holds, number one, a material personal interest upon the purchase of goods or services for the city, if they or a family member will derive personal benefit from such purchase, or the award of any contracts for the city where there's a financial or special interest of the city official, other than that which is typically possessed by the general public. A personal interest, a family interest, or a financial interest. So if a matter is before you that relates to one of those things, you have a potential conflict of interest. You shouldn't vote on it. There's a state law, which I've provided for you, 38, Section 2605, which is clear. If a public official votes on a matter in which they have a significant pecuniary, personal, or financial interest, that matter can be voided. So imagine you vote for a contract, and this applies on the school side. I'm sure you have tons of vendors you deal with. You're constantly buying things. We're constantly, the city, constantly buying things. If you vote on a contract that you have a connection to, or a family member of yours has a connection to, you've potentially acted inappropriately, that contract can be voided. Votes of the city council or the school board can be voided if, in fact, a member has acted in conflict of interest. That can have significant and adverse effects upon the city, if, in fact, we have to undo a contract. So there are very serious reasons why, aside from just the ethical issue, there could be significant financial ramifications to the city if this were ever to happen. So you just simply don't want to go down that road. The state does have a safe harbor in their statute. It's a 10% rule. If you have less than 10% of an interest, financial interest, in a particular company or contract, you're not technically in conflict. I would not rely on the 10% rule. You may not violate state law, but the public will still think it's a conflict of interest, and rightly so. So while there is a safe harbor, I wouldn't use it, I wouldn't rely on it. The statute requires that when you have a conflict, if you think you do, bring it to the attention of either the school board or the council. And as I always say, transparency is your friend. If you're transparent, people think you're acting appropriately, which you are. You're not hiding anything. Why, my aunt is the owner of that business, and she's been the owner of that business for the last 25 years. And so I'm not going to vote on this. Everyone's going to vote. Okay. You still want your aunt to get the contract, you hope she does, but you're not going to vote on it. You're transparent. Transparency is like an inoculation. It prevents us from future harm. So always best to disclose. And then if it's a tenuous relationship, if it's a questionable connection, the board that you sit on may say, you know what, we appreciate you bringing this to our attention, but we don't think this is a conflict. We don't see this as a problem, and we're okay with your voting. No problem. You can go forward. The state statute requires, though, even if it isn't a firm or fixed conflict, to avoid even what's called the appearance of a conflict. A lot of us know it's always the case, people assume something, they're not sure, but it looks, something doesn't look right. And that can always sometimes be worse, because people's views run ahead of the facts. And you're put into a bad position, even though nothing yet has happened. So that's why the phrase, "avoid even the appearance of a conflict," because it causes doubt, and people rightly ask, well, wait a minute, what's going on? A lot of ethics has now been reduced into legislative statutes in the form of criminal laws. So while conflicts of interest are simple matters, they're not going to get you arrested, there are improper ethical actions by government officials that can lead to your being arrested and charged. And so in Section C of the memo that I prepared for you on ethics, you'll see I've listed out eight, at least eight statutes, where public officials can put themselves at risk of criminal prosecution, obviously, excepting a bribe. I mean, come on, of course it's, of course you're going to be subject to arrest. It's an ethical concern, but it's also a practical concern. As I note, in bold at the bottom of that section, ethical breaches tend to flag themselves. You almost always will know when you're probably close to the line. Your little hairs will go up on the back of your neck, and you'll say, mm, I don't know. Well, if it's a criminal act, it's not even close. You know. You're probably doing it quietly behind the scenes without anybody seeing it, because you know. So ethical violations tend to flag themselves. Don't go there. I can assure you that juries do not like public citizen defendants. There will be no mercy shown, and prosecutors like to make examples of public officials. So best not to be in those positions. This, by the way, is just a short list of potential criminal violations, but these are the ones that directly tie to ethical actions or unethical actions that lead to more than simply, hey, you've got a conflict of interest here. They could lead to a criminal prosecution. A road you don't want to go down. There are also, also, my mouth's getting a little dry. There are also ethical standards in our city charter. And I'd refer you to the end of the charter, Section 9.01, again, stating that we do not want city officials participating in matters where they have, quote, "a substantial financial interest." Again, for obvious reasons. We don't want the public to think we voted for a certain contract because Counselor Smith or Counselor Jones is going to receive some benefit from it. That's not what we're about. We want to do better. And then I make, again, the final recommendation at the end. If you have questions about ethics, ask a colleague. Ask the person up the chain, either the superintendent or the city administrator. And if then there's still doubt, they will ask legal counsel. And we'll get it hashed out. These are priority questions, we'll deal with it as we can. Do any of you have questions or concerns? Counselor?
Yeah, thank you. Maybe a dumb question. I guess conflicts of interest are usually pretty obvious. But as you were speaking, I was thinking, you know, I have two kids in the schools, but I vote on the school budget, right? I'm on the board of many nonprofits, some of which maybe get local funding sometimes. I'm a property owner in Saco, I vote on the zoning ordinance, sometimes in a butter to other projects. When does it become a typical, usual, right, involvement versus a specific conflict of interest?
So I'll turn to the past. I was on the job for, I think it was my first year, and we had a sitting counselor whose wife taught in the schools. And the question was, could they vote on the school board contract? And I opined, yes, because that contract was going to affect his wife's pay. However, the contract, the budget for the schools, her pay was so attenuated, it was so, such a small part of the overall budget, the counselor was really only voting on an amount to raise for taxes. He had no effect on the teacher's actual salary. Didn't decide the salary, couldn't affect the salary at all. So you have to look at that. How much... Let's say you sit on the Dyer Library Board, and they come for city funding. That would be one where you would disclose, I would think, counselor, say, you know, I'm on the library board, I probably will pass, I'm going to recommend to my colleagues that I think the library deserves adequate funding, but I'll abstain on this particular vote. Where you were a direct member on a body, I would say that's probably one to not vote on. But if the finances are so buried within a larger global city budget, I don't think you'd have a worry. So it's really going to be very, we would need to look at the attendant facts around it. And it's how close, how hot, how close is your hand to the stove? So how close is your vote to the effect upon the person who could be benefited? As you are attenuated, as your influence is attenuated from that, the argument's going to be that there's no true conflict. So that's how we would analyze it, counselor.
And if I may, that would go back to the potential of if you thought or were concerned there might be a conflict, you would bring it up to council, explain your concern, and then we would ask council, does anybody have an issue with you voting on that? And that would be a council decision that would save you from having to make that choice.
In the past...
And again, based on that 10% rule, or, you know, the confidence...
We've had counselors who are realtors. We had one person who became a mayor who was a realtor. And we had to be very careful that those officials were not participating in matters where they were going to be receiving a commission or knew them. Their agency had a hand in the sale, because it was just direct. You know, so fortunately, I can tell you my experience has been Saco officials are very mindful of these things. I always tell this story every time I'm here, that probably most of you have never been bribed, but Dick Lambert, our former code enforcement officer, was bribed. He was handed $5,000 from a developer, who said, thanks, thanks for helping me out with that project. Well, Dick had nothing to do with it, remarkably, and they picked the wrong fellow, because not only was Dick Lambert a parent to a couple of Eagle Scouts, he was just as honorable and as good a public official as you could have. He came to me, we went to the FBI, and then the unexpected part was that they then expected him to wear a wire, so that he could get the other $5,000 that had been promised to him. But that's what we have in Saco, good officials who do the right thing. And I have no doubt that that's the same composition here in this room, and that this won't be an issue.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Counsel again?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tim, this is more of a follow-up and kind of on more of a housekeeping question, because as an aside, you said, probably not a good idea to bring home public documents. Now, is, obviously, you know, now that we are in the age of having an iPad, we have our public documents with us all the time. Obviously, we get a handout from school department, you know, something that's pretty substantial. Obviously, something we should hang on to for our records. Is there some sort of specific public document we're not supposed to have in our possession? I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything there. Because we obviously receive them from informed citizens who go to their own lawyers, who go to their own stuff, and being on the planning board, I just have a stack. I just want to make sure that, you know, it's, you know...
I'm not talking about your iPad, because whatever's on your iPad, IT can pull that right off to disclose to the public. But other records that you may come into possession that are not delivered to you via the iPad, probably don't want to keep a stack of those at home. You know, if you're, at some point, either bring them back to the city, or, because they really belong to the city. And so, and that's the idea, that, well, we need to look at these. Why do you have them? This could be notes that you've taken at meetings, that you just were jotting down. And those can be discovered.
So as a follow-up, you were suggesting that when we, as counselors, receive handouts from staff such as this, that we keep them in a place in City Hall as opposed to secure a location at home, or?
The more things you keep at home, the more risk you present to yourself.
I see.
And at some point, when you're done looking, you don't need them, you can either return them to City Hall, or you simply shred them.
I see. Okay, thank you.
This is just, because someone may say, oh, we want you to check Counselor Gunn's house. We understand he's taking planning board records home there. I know you didn't do that. That's just an example.
I was going to say, you know. Because I, I mean, the reason I bring it up is because we've seen in the last year, President, the former Vice President, having their house turned over for records. And obviously, you know, the former president, though. But like I said, since we receive documents all the time, you know, it's just a matter of practicality. I mean, obviously, if there's a FOIA request, you know, either throw it away or, you know, just, or-
Bring it back.
Or bring it back, you know.
And the bulk of what you get is no doubt on your iPad, which is great. But the main FOIA worked the same way as the federal FOIA. Those are government records. They're not really yours. They're the public's. And so, but if you want people coming over to your house, that's okay. I don't want to stop you.
School board members? Counselor Roach, ah, school board member Roach.
It's been five or six years. I thought I said fairly well to all this, but I'm back now, so. Technology has changed since I last was here. So you mentioned a lot about being careful of public meetings, but there's a lot of forums to be engaged. And we could be engaged all together on some sort of whatever Facebook site or a common conversation. We used to have workshops, and maybe we bring them back or not. But is there a case where there could be like a Zoom meeting of a workshop that included school board members and counselors as long as it's, I guess there's advertising rules, but?
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, you're not prevented from using a Zoom forum as long as it's noticed and the public can watch. There may be requirements that the public be able to participate, you know, by having some access. So that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about behind the scenes, unnoticed, you're conducting business on Facebook. You know, two or three, four people start a discussion about, you know, geez, this teacher we've got down at Burn School, he's really been a problem. For, next thing you know, two more board members have chimed in. Now essentially, you're at four. That's a meeting. And so that's to be avoided. It is a temptation with, and this is why, as all of you know, or most of you know, I don't participate in social media. You as politicians, particularly the counselors, obviously, you have to respond, you're citizens, you're ward people, but you have to be careful. You want to keep them informed, but you don't want to be conducting business in that forum. And it's a hard thing because you want to help the citizens, and that's a right thing to do, but you have to be careful.
Just a follow-up. Since there's much more knowledge gained out there through social media, you mentioned that citizens are treated like the customers, that we're here for the citizens of Saco. But at what point do you try to limit people from outside of Saco trying to come up to the microphone or chime in? At what point can we speak up to that, that outside, you know, outside forces are coming in here and not giving citizens equal time to rebut or get down here or what have you? Should a community limit public participation to their citizens? Or what's an ethical recommendation in this age of, you know, constant knowledge on things?
Probably getting beyond my role. But I, my understanding is councils can always set reasonable limitations. For instance, you can say citizens first. You can set time limits on people so that your citizens aren't essentially denied access to the microphone by someone coming. But the mere fact that someone's from outside the city has not traditionally been a basis to prohibit someone from speaking. But I think I've never seen it abused here. The only time I think I got close to that was when we had, the casino was being considered here for Outer Route One. And we had folks from Las Vegas and all over the country here. And it was, it was pretty crazy for a while. But I believe Bill Johnson was the mayor at the time. Bill was very patient, gave people a reasonable amount of time, but then made sure the citizens all had their opportunity to speak. And I think that's, it is a part of customer service, that you want to hear from your citizens, if possible, first and foremost. One of the reasons, I think, we ask people to come up and identify who they are so that you know when they're speaking. And intuitively, you're not obliged to give the viewpoint of a citizen who lives in Hollis the same way it is you might give the citizen who lives on North Street. I mean, you're allowed to say, I appreciate your input, but I, you know, I'm more concerned with what my own citizens are saying. I mean, that's perfectly acceptable. But a blanket prohibition, that might be hard.
Any other questions or comments?
I wish both boards good luck this year. Congratulations on the winners.
Thank you, Tim.
Take care.
Okay, so that concludes the joint meeting with the school board. And congratulations to all the newly and renewal elected officials. Okay, next on the item agenda, we do have one reading, petition for city acceptance of new public street per chapter 186, Jada Drive and Foster Field subdivision. And that is assigned to Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Foster Field subdivision, also known as Ricker Road subdivision, approved in February 2019, consists of nine residential house lots served by private septic systems and walls off Flag Pond and Ricker Roads. This road was designed and constructed to city street standards, and the developer is now requesting that the city council consider accepting the street per chapter 186 ordinance provisions. At its November 7th meeting, the planning board forwarded a positive recommendation of this request, provided that compliance with condition 19 has been confirmed. Staff has since verified this condition has been met. I move to accept Jada Drive in the Foster Field subdivision as a city street.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any comments or discussions? Okay, we are not seeing any, but any roll call vote? Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. And that concludes the action item agendas for tonight. And next on the item, we do have administrative update.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I just want to remind people that the Holiday Festival and Parade of Lights is on Saturday, December 9th, beginning at 1:00 p.m. The parade's scheduled to begin at 6:00 p.m. And for the full list of activities, as well as detailed scheduling events, please visit Also, with the swearing in of the new mayor, Jody McPhail, there will be a vacancy in Ward Six, and that the Saco City Council will accept letters of interest from Ward Six residents who wish to serve on the city council for the remainder of Counselor McPhail's term expiring December 2nd, 2024. Letters of interest will be accepted until 4:00 p.m. on December 19th. And interested candidates must submit a letter of interest to Michelle Hughes, City Clerk, at mhughes@sacomaine.org or at the City Clerk's office at Saco City Hall, 300 Main Street, by 4:00 p.m. on December 19th, 2023. The submission from the interested candidates will be reviewed and discussed publicly during the city council meetings on January 8th, 2024. The city will release the names of candidates who have submitted letters of interest in our news center located at saco.org/news, weekly on Fridays until this process is complete. We'll also announce the list of candidates and future administrative updates during council meetings. As of Friday, December 2nd, 2023, the city has not received any letters of interest for Ward Six, Council C. There is an RFP. The city of Saco is soliciting bids for custodial surfaces at the transportation center. Bids are due by December 22nd. Please contact the Public Works Department or visit the bids and RFP section of the city's website for more details. That's all I have, Your Honor. If there's anything else or any questions?
Thank you, City Administrator Baranko. Any members of council have any questions or comments on this upstate? Okay, moving forward, next we have council discussion and comment. Any council discussion or comment? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. And this comment's directed at you. I'm the proud, proud husband and father of three women who, through hard work and breaking down barriers, have succeeded as family matriarchs and professionals in their respective fields. I take great pleasure in being part of this historic moment of serving on the administration of our city's first female mayor. So Mayor McPhail, I'm confident that you will be an excellent leader of our great city. You will also be a trailblazer for future generations of women in our community. And I want you to know that you have my commitment in support of your efforts to positively address the many challenges facing our community. I hope the entire city council find, I hope to help the entire city council find constructive solutions to these challenges. So best of luck to you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussions? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just be remiss if I didn't mention that, you know, about four years ago, we came onto the council at the same time, and here you are. And as your friend and as a longtime colleague, I'm just, my sincere congratulations to your election. And as you saw with your predecessor, not exactly the easiest job to have every now and then. I mean, there are slings and arrows, and some are fair and some are not so fair. But that, you know, that's why, again, that's why I told this last week, that's why they pay us the big bucks. So they really don't do that. But that's neither here nor there. Point is, I am just very excited for you to be in this position. And of course, us and myself and the council, though, we're all rooting for you. And just do good, as they say. And I'd be remiss if I didn't welcome my new neighbor and colleague, Counselor Parks. I was going to say, you know, the first meeting, you know, a lot of information, though. And of course, we haven't even got into the budget season yet, so that's where we're really off to the races, though. But no, this is, happy to have you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to just remind counselors, in addition to the parade being on Saturday, yes, council and mayor will be marching in the parade. Would love to have everybody attend. And as usual, please, family is invited as well. We know that Counselor Johnston, his son Nathan, loves to join us at all of the parades, and it's always a good time. So yes, family is invited. And the parade starts at 6:00. I will have Michelle send out an update just basically, I would assume, probably about 5:00, 5:30.
4:30. I have something here that she sent out today. Let's see if I have it. She did send an email out to all council members today.
Okay. Must have been before I left.
Yeah, here you go, Your Honor.
Okay. So the parade lining up starts at 4:30 and is closed at 5:30. We are to line up behind the First Parish Church, the DCP building on the right side of Middle Street Extension. We do have our banner that we will have with us. And then also, just to remember, it is a lights parade, so dress up, be festive, and let's light up the city. Okay, that takes us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second by Counselor Johnston. Roll call vote. Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
And Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and have a great night.
You too.